I'd like to call the order, the meeting of the Board of Trustees for Long Beach Community College District for April 24, 2018. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Jenny Baxter.
Here.
Jeff Kellogg.
Here.
Vivian Malauulu.
Here.
Doug Otto.
Here.
Sunny Zia.
Here.
Thank you. Item 1.3, Public Comments on Closed Session Items. Madam Secretary, do we have any speakers?
There are none.
Thank you. We will then be adjourning to closed session with the items will be existing litigation pursuant to government code and conference with legal counsel, publication of law group, anticipated litigation. That is item 1.4. Item 1.5 pending litigation pursuant to government code with legal counselor. And then 1.6 negotiated items pursuant to government code, conference with those Doug Otto, Jean Duran, negotiations AFT, LBCC, FAC, and management team. And item 1.7 personnel pursuant to government code, public employee performance evaluation. This is for the Superintendent President. There are no other items at this time. Without objection, we will adjourn to closed session. Thank you. I'd like to reconvene the Board of Trustees for Long Beach Community College District for April 24, 2018. Madam Secretary, calling to order.
Jenny Baxter.
Please stand. And Student Trustee, will you lead us in a pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge my right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Here.
Jeff Kellogg.
Here.
Vivian Malauulu.
Here.
Doug Otto.
Here.
Sunny Zia. Here.
And Student Trustee Chavez.
President. Item 2.4, Report on Closed Session Items. The Board of Trustees convened in closed session pursuant to government codes, section 549, 56.9A, and voted 5-0 with no abstentions abstaining in to approve the settlement of $38,000 in Los Angeles Superior Court case number NC061411. There are no other items to report out of a closed session beyond that one. So we'll move on to item 2.5, Approval of Minutes of the March 27, 2018, regular Board of Trustees meetings. Are there any questions, corrections on that? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Motion by Trustee Zia, second by Trustee Baxter. Question, comments, members of the board? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on item 2.5.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
And Student Trustee Chavez.
Aye.
Thank you. 2.6, Introduction and Special Announcements. Superintendent President?
Yes, we have a few announcements today. I'd like to introduce Professor Pat McKeon, who is going to announce some awards from his journalism students. Welcome.
Welcome, Pat.
... public and students. First of all, very briefly, I'd like to thank all our dedicated colleagues in the IT Department and many others who helped over the last three weeks during the current tech challenges. Also, thanks to Board President Kellogg for 16 years on the board. We appreciate your support of our college. Special thanks for your support of journalism through being a guest speaker, attending our awards programs, and answering just a few questions from student journalists over the years. Thank you. We wish you the best. Now for our 10 recent awards at the Journalism Association of Community Colleges State Convention in Burbank. And may I please ask the audience to hold its applause until the list is complete. For the first time in our proud history, we earned one of only four Pay Center Awards, a combination of several categories. I'll let you enjoy the plaque. I was especially proud to help the students earn this award in my final semester of full-time teaching. With Crystal Adams King as editor-in-chief and Walter Hammerold as advisor, City Magazine also captured a General Excellence Award. The Viking print edition led by editors-in-chief Amanda Rodriguez, Lisette Mendoza, and Carlos Ochoa, and advised by Chris Viola and me, also received a General Excellence Award. Joshua Miller earned a first place in illustration for cover page of the printed Viking. Aaron Asis captured fourth place in on-the-spot contest for news photo, and Amanda Rodriguez gained fourth in sports photo. Honorable mentions were presented to Haley Hardin Magazine Photo and Story Essay, Lisette Mendoza again in newspaper illustration, and Osbyel Montano for newspaper sports feature. Also Hannah Robison was honored with a scholarship. Please join me in applauding our outstanding journalism students. Thank you very much.
An additional announcement that I would like to make is for the summer session information. You have a packet available to you today. The summer session, due to our technical difficulties, has been moved, summer registration has been moved to May 7. We have met with faculty, with department chairs, with team members to have them help us get the word out to students. You will see, you were emailed plans on how we are attacking this from a social media angle, from an advertising angle. You saw pop-up tents all over campus. We have asked faculty to sign up to go to four open labs that we have where students can register. So we are being very aggressive in retaining our enrollment for the summer session, and I want to thank the faculty and counselors and IT who have made that happen. The last thing that we have in my report, and congratulations to Professor McKeon and all the students, is a report from Sylvia Lynch, who's our Chief Information Officer. As you know, we have experienced a cyber incident over the last three weeks that has been extremely impactful to our systems, and she's going to give a very detailed update to the board that I know the board and the audience will be very interested in. Welcome Sylvia.
Good evening. I've been asked to give a report on the cyber incident at LBCC, and for the purposes of this report, I am being careful to state information as accurately as possible as the situation continues to be fluid. I am using the term malware tonight also, as it is a broad terminology for the incidences that we have experienced. So during the month of April, we've experienced two cyber incidents. The first one was on Tuesday, April 2. The behavior of this malware was generating scripts or programs that utilize our system, our computing resources for crypto mining, cryptocurrency mining. The effects of the malware was resolved by killing the specific processes and rebooting the computers and the servers. On April 3, we felt it prudent to contact our cyber insurance company, informing of the incident and going through the necessary steps to assess the damage. However, on April 10, we experienced another cybersecurity incident that was designed to encrypt our files. The cyber forensic team happened to arrive on Wednesday, April 11. The team worked closely with Scott Volker, Mark Itis, and many other IT staff to look for the malware's point of entry, behavior of the virus, and perform damage assessments in containment. IITS continues to respond to questions from the forensic team and expects a report at the conclusion of their investigation. So the big question is what has been affected? LBCC IT infrastructure is comprised of over 300 physical and virtual servers, 1,700 employee computers, and over 3,000 computers in the classrooms and labs. Here's the good news. At this time, we don't see any evidence of personal information data stolen. Our PeopleSoft system, the data is encrypted at rest, which means you need permission to open it up and look at it, to access it. Our data in our test and development systems are scrambled. Another good news is the, our academic network is not affected. We set up separate networks in order for the academic side to not affect our administrative side, and in this case, what happened on our administrative network did not cross over and affect our academic network, which is good, teaching continued. So no computers and servers were affected in classrooms. Cloud applications such as our website, our Canvas system, our library systems were also not affected. Our internal web servers were not affected. Our backups were intact, which is important. No Macintosh computers were affected, and no personal computers were affected. The systems that were affected of the 1,700 employee computers, early reports are showing about 15, 50% of the computers were affected by the second malware. Some files that are, personal files that are stored on Office 365 connected to external drives or are stored on the shared Map Drive drives were encrypted. While no database servers were affected, most internal applications and web servers were. Did I say that right? No database servers were affected, but the application and web servers were affected. Our email system, phone system, communication system, HRs, fiscal, student systems, all were affected, and about 25 third-party applications were affected, and the data feeds from PeopleSoft to many of these third-party products were affected. For example, we upload enrollment information to Canvas and to our library system. Our recovery is well underway to recover, and we have made phenomenal progress in two weeks. The job at hand was to rebuild pretty much everything. Rebuild servers, our applications, and all of our employee desktops. More than, at least 50% of the applications, particularly the ones that are student-facing, are back online. Our HR fiscal system, back online. Student system is ready, except we're experiencing some performance issues, and as soon as, and we're working with Microsoft, as soon as those are resolved, we will give the access back to the students, and we will notify them through the communications office, emails, and text messages. Our priorities during recovery were communication systems, payroll, student-serving systems, Moodle, other learning, therefore Moodle, and our other learning management systems were all brought up first, then phone system, voicemail, and email. Payroll was brought up so that we could meet our deadline, and it has been taken down and then brought up again. After a new desktop image was built, a series of diagnostic steps and diagnostic steps were developed, and a methodology to safely rebuild desktop computers were determined. We began the process to go out in the field and reimagine desktop computers. As of yesterday evening, about 150 computers have either been cleared or reimagined. The first group, again, the first group that we were imaging is slower. They have more individualized software needs, but we now have 17 technicians in the field, and we believe we can get to all the first computers that are identified in the first round by next week. We set up a station at the help desk, so faculty and staff that have laptops can drop them off there to be assessed and reimagined. Our student technology help desk has been assisting students with questions on these issues. We've rolled back our Office 365 files and are working on stabilizing the shared and Map Drives. We have been working with the communications department to alert students, faculty, and staff when systems are back online, and we are working with them to update our website at lbcc.edu/itupdate to inform the LBCC community of our progress. The last question that is often asked is what will we be doing to prevent this in the future? In January, we entered a purchase requisition, and a purchase order was issued in March for a product called Portal Guard, which will allow us to implement multi-factor authentication. At this time, we suspected that would have prevented this specific malware attack from, prevented the damage occurred by this malware. We have actively worked with the chancellor's office to implement two products called Tenable and Splunk. These tools both actively and passively monitor our network for outside attacks. However, in this case, these tools would not have caught the malware. In March, Betty just approved the purchase of an ERP firewall system that will add another layer of security on our PeopleSoft systems, again requiring two-factor authentication in order to retrieve and report, display personal information. We have begun, we had begun, and now we have hardened our desktop images, removing privileges that would have prevented the spread of the damage, and plus, we have requested additional hardware, software inventory tools in our department plan, all according to CIS security In conclusion, I do want to take this moment to thank the IT team. They have worked, many of them 15 days straight. Some have worked 36 hours. We had to send home. Everybody has stepped up. It's been exhausting, but they are phenomenal, and I am really, we all are very appreciative. We're very thankful that our colleagues have been patient, understanding, even in the last few days, going out into the field, working with our colleagues. Nobody has expressed anything but positive. Thank you. We appreciate the help. We know you're working hard, and that really means a lot to me. They have sent donuts, bagels, gift cards, sandwiches, you name it. I'm sure alcohol has gone over there, but I, they don't let me see that, but I do want to thank them, as thank you's not drinking, but I do, I do want to thank them for all they have done and for everybody that has supported my team during this process.
Thank you Sylvia. I want to really commend the IITS team. They have worked around the clock. We've literally had to send them home. Please let them know how much we appreciate them. They've brought their hustle, they've brought their A-game, and we truly appreciate them working day and night to try and get us back up. Please let them know how appreciative we are.
Are there questions, members of the board at this time on these items? You mentioned 17 technicians, but how many individuals do you have in your department, though?
Across the entire department, I think I have over 40. Some of them are developers, web developers, PeopleSoft developers, media technician, broadcast technicians. And then we have about five, let's see, about five technicians for this campus. I think we have two technicians for the PCC campus.
Wow.
And so we're pulling, begging and pleading paperwork to pull in people to do some out of class, to bring them up to go help do the investigation, the diagnostics, to look at a computer to determine if it's cleared, infected, or if it's cleared to go. So everybody is pitching in.
And when will we be all clear?
Honestly, to do all of the computers, it will take a while, but I am expecting the first round of computers to be done within a week. So I'm going to say about a third within a week, and then there are some people that are like, you know, we can wait, and then there's some that, well, these computers are just sitting here, they're not active, we don't need to look at them for a while. But we will need to touch and reimagine every computer.
Unfortunately, it was, we won't know the real results of this, these actions until probably within the next 12 months because the residual effect of this is going to be very difficult on us, within our students and everyone else. So it has not been easy, we realize that. And we still are waiting for that infamous Ramson note that we haven't received, so.
Right.
Not asking for anyone to start sending them either, because.
Yeah.
Chairperson, can I just, Trustee Malauulu?
Thank you Sylvia for a very comprehensive report. Thank you to your staff. I recognize that you all have been working very hard around the clock, and I appreciate that, and I know the rest of the college community does too. I would just be remiss to not share a little bit of the nature of some of the discussion that we had in closed session, even though, you know, it's sensitive information and we're not allowed to talk about it. I just want you to know that a great amount of time that we spent in closed session was discussing this issue and how much the board, the concern that we have, this is unacceptable. It cannot happen again. However, it happened, it needs to be identified and resolved quickly, and it is, it is an issue that all of, the entire board is very concerned with. You know, it is what it is, and we can't really say too much about it, but I just, I want everybody to know that we spent a great deal of time talking about this, and we know that the college is doing everything it can to prevent it from happening again, but I don't know, you know, I don't even know if that's good enough. You know, this is a serious matter. We should be enrolling students right now, and we are not. And our students are possibly going other places because of this unfortunate circumstance and the unfortunate timing in which it presented itself. So it is not something that we are taking lightly. Just, you know, rest assured that people are working on this and trying to resolve You know, it's a tough thing to stomach. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members this time? Student Trustee?
I'm just going to give my input on this. I mean, first off, thank you so much Sylvia for the update on what's going on. Thank you so much for the IITS department and everybody who's putting in work regarding this, and I know we're not completely 100% back up, but I mean, you know, it's difficult contacting our professors when we don't have the emails.
Right.
That's kind of our first go-to. I did notice that the text messaging was working. A lot of students were getting text messages, and that was really helpful to check in constantly on updates on the website. My own professor, I really want to thank President Romali on giving out that statement for the faculty to extend assignments, because I mean, a lot of students did struggle with that. We weren't able to access Canvas at one point, or some students were able to, and then others, you know, had issues. But luckily, that's running back up. But I myself can't even access my Viking student system yet. I can't access my Oracle yet. So I mean, you know, it's tough, but I see that, they're putting in work, and I really do appreciate everything. So once again, hopefully nothing like this ever happens again, but during these past two weeks, three weeks, it was, it was really difficult to get ahold of professors, or, you know, the only way was going to their office hours, and that's if sometimes they were there, or sometimes things happen. But again, thank you to the IITS department and everybody else who's been putting in work on this issue.
Thank you. Other members? Chairperson recognizes, Vice President Zia.
Thank you, President Kellogg. I really want to thank you Sylvia, you and your team, and President Romali. We've got great support and swift action, so, you know, it's like somebody robbing your home, you know, it is what it is, it happens. It's unfortunate, but I know I have every faith in you guys, we all do. These are the moments where we come together as a family. I mean, this is a catastrophe, and I was really pleased to see your team, all hands on deck, everybody at their college coming together and really doing something about it and being there for one another. So that was the silver lining, but I'm really hopeful it doesn't happen again, and I know you're going to put in the mitigation measures to prevent that. And really thank you and all of our great staff who's been working day in and day out, and appreciate your leadership.
Other members? Chairperson recognizes, Trustee Otto.
Yeah, very briefly, again, thank you for all your efforts. I think I was in touch with President Romali on almost a daily basis while this was going on, and it's scary, especially since we know so little about how this all worked. We, I'm confident based on the information I was receiving that we responded quickly. We got outside experts involved very, very quickly to help us address these issues, and we have not received, to my knowledge, any demands for money, although that could have come. We're on the way to rebuilding all this, but it's a, it's an object lesson, and some of the things you mentioned that are in the works or were in the works even before this happened, give me some more comfort about how we're responding to this. And I think that what Trustee Zia said is very true, and that is that we really have come together as a, as a community around this issue, and I can see that we're taking many, many steps to make sure this doesn't happen again. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chairperson recognizes, Trustee Baxter.
Yeah, again, thank you Sylvia for all your work, and to all the people at the IT staff, and thank you to President Romali for immediately admitting the problem, being transparent, which I think is so important to the public, and I know that we'll be back okay very, very shortly.
Thank you. I think we all look forward to, after we finally get everything back up and running, that then, at that point in time, we'll probably have an opportunity to really review and see what we do it in so many other ways for emergency preparedness and so many other disasters that can strike our campus, and you never think this is going to happen, but it has, and just some of the lessons learned, how we can better address it in the future, what things you will need to better protect the college in case this type of attack happens again, and what lessons we learn from it, and we move forward, because it is devastating to the college in a way we never thought of 15, 20 years ago. So, but the fact is that, as was mentioned, we should be registering students as we speak right now for our summer courses. Our summer courses are critical in our enrollment management plan, and that concerns all of us, obviously, and that's, and I know it concerns you too, so the lessons learned, we'll see what they are, but it's been, it's been trying on everybody, so thank you very much. Other comments this time? Thank you. Superintendent President, do you have other items at this time?
That completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. 2.7 is the reordering of the agenda. I have heard that there is no request to reorder the agenda, so it will stay as is. We'll next move to 2.8, the ASB President's Report. How's your computer doing?
Mine personally?
No.
I don't have one, so that's fine. But just speaking off of that, the ones who were like more affected, I'd say, were those who, those professors who were actually still using the Moodle system. I had one of the professors that was still using it, and one of our exams kind of just got wiped, so they had to re-grade it. I still got a 92, though, so that's fine. But, but all right, let's start this off. So good evening, everyone. So just going to go over a few past events, some of the things we're currently working on, and then upcoming announcements. So first off, this goes back to very late March. Easter egg hunt at PCC was really great. We had all the kids come out picking up those Easter eggs. I don't know if you guys have seen, sorry, I keep saying, ah, but chickens in a coop when you throw kind of bird seeds at them and they just kind of pick at them, that's exactly what happened at PCC on that Friday. It was really fun. I got a video, if any of you guys want to see it, I'll share it. But moving on, 10th Annual Beverly O'Neill Leadership Conference happened on April 14. I'd like to thank the trustees who came, as well as President Romali. Thank you for that. The students got to meet different mentors from different groups that they would kind of like to pursue different facets of their lives, depending on what they are. Some entertainment, communications, there were a lot of different majors that were serviced there, so I'm very happy about that. And then following that, this past Saturday, I don't know if you guys went, but there was a mini Grand Prix and chili cook-off. Shout-out to the Order of Tong as well as P&amp;K for winning the mini Grand Prix, and to my boys at the Order of Thor, congratulations on winning non-traditional best chili. Thank you. Following that, the Sustainability Fair happened last Thursday. We were given out fruit and such. There were different vendors out, as well as different businesses. There were different vendors out as well as different businesses and different departments from LBCC, giving out information to students, also a few like free goodies, so that was fun. And that's it for past events. Now, things are, that are currently being worked on. First, smoking survey that I touched on last meeting. So now there are roughly around, I wanna say 350 surveys collected. Starting to get a better picture of like what students are saying right now. So once we hit around 400, 450, that's when we'll pretty much gather everything and that's when things are gonna get serious, very serious. Following that, currently our LAC Club Center president is leading the charge to hopefully get summer chartering allowed for clubs and organizations. Many of our clubs have expressed interest, I wanna say a good 90% of them, in chartering over the summer, especially now that they're like two week, two, six-week sessions. It almost seems like a somewhat mini semester. They've, sorry, our LAC Club Center president as well as others in that kinda task force have reached out to RIS services and they said they've gotten their okay. So next is meeting with our Dean Ramon Knox as well as our ASB cabinet to discuss the like logistics of it all. And we'll see where it goes from there. Following that, ASB elections are going on now, this morning around 8:00 AM, up until April 26th at 10:00 PM. There's going to be different ballot locations at the PCC campus as well as the LAC campus during the day. And also there are, for those who aren't at campus, so they can do that. And then results will be made available next Monday. Now, onto upcoming announcements. First off, the Culture Walk will be going on May 17th in the E quad. Different organizations are gonna be coming up. Food, there's always food in culture, as well as live performances from different bands and such, so that's gonna be fun. And then the Club Awards Banquet will be held May 29th at 11:00 AM in the Nordic Lounge. It's gonna be an 80s theme. You can come either professional or in the 80s theme. Who hears from the 80s, guys? Well, alright, so you guys can come in and kinda judge to see if it's, you know, up to date or not. But feel free to come, come by. Following that, it's going to be the Annual Spring Sing will be occurring May 19th. I don't know if you guys know, but it's a pretty, pretty long tradition, I'd say around 60, 60-plus years or so. So come to that, May 19th, 7:00 PM. This year's gonna be in the large gym right over here, Hall of Champions. So make sure to come out. Tickets are $5 if you get them pre-sale from, a lot of clubs are selling. So check out with that or at the door for $7 or $8 Joe?
$7.
$7. And all that money goes to a scholarship for students as well. And then just lastly, the ASB banquet scheduled for June 1st. Hopefully you guys have gotten your invitations. If you haven't, they'll be coming out soon. And thank you all. You guys have a good evening. Class 6:45.
Thank you. Good job. A lot of activities going on this time of year. 2.9, public comments. Madam Secretary, I have no speaker cards, correct? Very good. Moving on then, student trustee, you'll be voting on this as well. 3.1, resolution, Classified School Employee Week. This is the third week of May, has been designated as a Classified School Employee Week and is recognized by the State of California through a bill signed by the governor, actually in 1986. This is an action item, so entertain a motion. Motion by trustee Baxter, second by trustee Otto. Questions, comments, members of the board on the resolution honoring our Classified Employee Week? None? Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
And student trustee Chavez?
Aye.
Thank you. Item 3.2, certification of election member of Long Beach City College Community College District. This is an action item, student trustee, you will be voting on it. The Long Beach Community College District adopted a resolution ordering a governing board member election to be held on April 10th, 2018. And with the initial election of the city of Lakewood and Long Beach, the election was held as directed and candidates for trustee Area 1 were as follows. Trustee-elect, Udoak Nutok, and then in Areas 3 and 5, trustee Zia and trustee Baxter. Entertain a motion to approve this. Motion by trustee Malauulu, second by trustee Zia. Questions, comments at this time? Congratulations to you all. Hearing none? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on item 3.2.
I have a comment. I wanted to say.
Chairperson Reckness, trustee Zia?
Thank you, President Kellogg. I just wanted to thank you for your 16-year of service. I'm sure, I know you don't want a big party, but it may be in the works. And I also wanna thank, thank the voters for their confidence in trustee Baxter and myself. It's nice to get the 100% vote and not be opposed, so thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, roll please.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
And student trustee Chavez?
Aye.
Thank you, that carries. Congratulations. For presentations, these are now just informational items. 4.1, improving retention and completion. Superintendent President, you introduce the presenters please. Again, this is an informational item only.
Yes. Thank you. As they are assembling, they're going to be led by Dean of Counseling Noel Corral. We've had some exciting advances in our completion agenda this year that they're going to talk to you about. We have instituted a strategy to go after and design special schedules for students who have 45-plus credits, who are close to completion, to get them across the finish line. And you're gonna see some very mic drop moments in tonight's presentation. It's been very successful. Wait for the mic drop. You're also going to see a strategy surrounding the, the over 2,000 students currently at LBCC who have 60 or more credits and a strategy designed to get them across the finish line away. So I won't steal their mic drops. Take it away, Dean Corral.
Thank you, Superintendent President Romali. Good evening, members of the board, Board President Kellogg, vice presidents, students, staff, faculty, members of the community. We're excited to present to you this evening truly remarkable work that has been going on in collaboration with students or staff, faculty, and managers to really be in alignment with our strategic plan and our strategic enrollment management plan as well. And these interventions, as President Romali mentioned, were looking at the students at key completion milestones such as 45 units completed and 60 units completed and try to help them get across the finish line. So you're gonna hear from Jennifer, from Elijah, and Sonia on some of these efforts that have been really astonishing. So I'll turn it over to Jennifer to talk a little bit about the data and Sonia will take over with some of the intervention.
Okay, so to start in winter, we created a work group that really focused on developing and interventions to increase our completions, especially for our disproportionately impacted students. And we chose to focus on students with 45 or more credit units that they had already completed because these are students that are already close to graduating. And by implementing focused interventions, we can, one, help them to graduate faster and increase our graduation rates. Two, we know this will boost our numbers and the funding formula. Three, we can increase our iPads graduation rates and these are our national graduation rates that we can compare ourselves to across the nation. And most importantly, we would be increasing the earning potential of these students. We know when students get an associate's degree in their hands, they on average earn 8% more in the workplace. So we started in this work group by looking at some of the data on these students. And what we can see is that when students complete 45 or more credit units at the college, within one year of that milestone, only 26% of those students have completed. And within 10 years with that same group of students, only 73% of them have completed. We also looked at what some of these barriers might be. And one of those barriers is in order to get an associate's degree, you also have to complete your general education components. And what we see is with these students with 45 or more units to completion, 67% have still not completed their math requirement. 67% have also not completed their life science and lab requirement. And 62% haven't completed their critical thinking requirement. And that's very concerning. At the same time, we looked at our iPads graduation rates and you can see that they're very variable over time. You know, they were down, they went up, they went back down. And what we really wanna be seeing is a steady increase in our graduation rates as we implement more focused interventions and target these students to streamline their completion. And finally...
Excuse me. Could you, could you just explain to the audience what the iPad graduation rates are?
Yeah, so the iPads graduation rates are a, the national rates that we compare ourselves to. So typically, we look at the chancellor's office data within the state of California. This would be the national data for awards, annual awards for students. So we're looking at our completion rate at the national level, the federal level instead of the state level. Okay. And then finally, when we were looking at data, this is more recent, this was presented to you at the board meeting last time, but we felt it was really relevant to include in our presentation because when we're looking at our awards compared to the other districts in the states, we know that LBCC ranks 71 out of 72 districts in the number of annual awards we give out. We rank 65 out of 72 districts in the number of three-year completions. And we rank 30 out of 72 districts in the number of ADTs. And this is very concerning and we know that we need to do something about this. We are a very large district compared to many of the other districts in the, in the state of California. And so to be this low, we know we need to implement some new interventions and really streamline our programs. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Sonia Delatorre to talk to you about our first intervention.
Jennifer, only because you look at this and people always ask the question, and there's nothing to be proud of because that is a, that is something that concerns you. You're 71 out of 72 districts. Who is 72? Who was dead last? And I'm asking it actually for a reason. Is it a similar district to ours or is it a rural district or is it a...
You know what? I don't know the answer to that. We can get that district for you. I don't know it off the top of my head, but we will get that one.
It is nothing we would ever put on our, our brochures, trust me, but I was just curious when I looked at it. Alright, thank you. And ADTs are associate degrees for transfer? Yeah. At least it's a positive trend, but it's a starting point that you don't wanna start
So, the counseling plus registration intervention was in direct response to the data that Jennifer just presented. It was clear that we needed to do something intentional to address the completion issue at our college. During the winter intersession, we contacted students via phone and email to invite them to attend a counseling plus registration event. We offered six of these events with three specific goals in mind. One, to help inform our course offerings for the spring semester. Two, to assist students in enrolling in classes for the spring as a way to generate FTS for the college. And three, to create comprehensive educational plans for our students that we know shorten the time to completion for students. At counseling plus registration events, students had the opportunity to meet one-on-one with the counselor. And following the meeting with the counselor, they, they either created or modified an educational plan, they were then funneled into a registration room where they received one-on-one assistance with registration. We also embedded admissions and records and financial aid representatives in those registration rooms to troubleshoot any registration barriers. So not only was this intervention a holistic, student-centered approach, but as you can see from the pie chart, we were able to capture an additional 150 comprehensive student educational plans that helped clarify the path to completion for so many of our students. And here's why this information is so critically important to us. When we look at our return on investment for this particular intervention, the figures are fairly impressive. In looking at the graph, you see that the cost of our intervention itself was about $7,600, which was primarily to fund counseling. And as a result of these efforts, we generated about $19,500 through the development of comprehensive educational plans and approximately $187,000 in FTS revenue with about 36 additional FTS for the college, resulting in about $199,000 in potential total revenue for the college for this one intervention alone.
While, while implementing counseling plus registration, Triple SP and Student Equity teamed up to pilot another unique intervention that flipped our approach to student, student services on its head. Traditionally, we expect for students to, to initiate whatever services they're, they're receiving, but why? Rather than wait for students to come in to initiate their own services, we use data to identify disproportionately impacted students who had 45 units or more and needed a comprehensive educational plan. And we brought those services directly to the students. This new approach of, of serving students is called targeted counseling interventions and it leverages our counselors to reach out to LBCC students directly and offer the students the support that they need. Why is this important? Because the students who need, need the most help typically are not the, the students who are gonna come in to receive that help. And because our students at LBCC are just, are just that important to us and they deserve a personal touch. How did we do it? Counselors called and they emailed students directly in order to offer their support and meet with the students. And the results were impactful. Students were tremendously grateful. One student shared, "I didn't know counselors did this." And another student came into the counseling department and said, "My friend got a call. When am I gonna get mine?" In addition, disproportionately impacted students who, who needed these, these services were the ones who received them. We had an amazing 88% show rate. And because the show rate was so high, we were able to generate 228 comprehensive student educational plans when these students, not if, but when these students persist, that's more graduations, which is good for students and it's good for the college. While the costs versus the return on investment were about the same, there were a few other, other significant things to note. The first is that this was an equity-focused intervention and therefore the students who we served may not have received those services otherwise. By, by meeting with these students, counselors were able to ensure that the students could see a clear path to completion. And comprehensive student educational plans helped to prevent students from taking unnecessary courses and that shortens a time for a student to get to completion. These efforts combined are likely to increase our rate at LBCC of graduations and transfer.
Given the successes that we experienced through the past interventions that Elijah just described, we decided to look at students that had 60 or more units. What do we know about these students? One, we know that they're close to completion and two, we know that they're not completing. We discovered that we had about 2,100 students at LBCC with 60 or more units. And of those, a little more than 1,400 students were disproportionate impact students with no degree. Our counselors contacted all 1,400 of the disproportionate impact students and created comprehensive student educational plans for them if they did not already have one on file, or they modified a comprehensive ed plan to ensure that their path to completion was much more clear. Through these efforts, 118 students applied for degrees and certificates. These students were completely unaware that they had an award sitting on the table for them. And we, when we extended the graduation deadline for all of the students, we captured an additional 138 students to apply for graduation for a total of 256 students that were, that we were able to take across the finish line, who again, had no knowledge that they had And I wanna highlight that I think this data alone emphasizes the critical importance of why our college needs pathways. It is unacceptable for us to continue to allow students to have 60 or more units and still not have a degree. And again, why does this matter? Because when we look at our return on investment, not only does this impact students' lives, but the figures are very promising. While we spent about $75,000 on this intervention, which was primarily to fund adjunct counselors to execute the deliverables of our projects like comprehensive ed plans and facilitate the application for degrees and certificates... the application for degrees and certificates, when we look at the return and the potential gains, we anticipate generating about $13,700 from the creation or modification of comprehensive educational plans, and about $1.3 million in potential reward revenue, for a total potential revenue to our college of $1.2 million.
These interventions are also removing student barriers for the students who need it most. The top three student populations served were Latino students, African-American students, and disabled students. Another striking thing about these interventions for us is that they removed some of the assumptions that we have about students institutionally. We assume that students know when, where, and how to activate the appropriate resources, and that students are going to come to us in order to do that. Instead, these interventions brought the resources to students. Targeted counseling interventions enable the counseling faculty and the Triple SP team, with support from Student Equity and other groups, to enable the appropriate resources for students at the right times.
So as you can see, a lot of efforts have been made to really support our students, particularly our disproportionately impacted students, students of color, to make sure that they're on track, stay on track, and that they complete. We've created, as a result of these interventions, approximately 700 modified or new comprehensive student educational plans. We've increased the college's FTS by 37, which is about four additional units that each student that got through our interventions added, and a total of about 256 awards that we previously did not have completed. So what does this mean? It means there's 256 students and families that are now increasing social mobility and economic development here in Long Beach. It also means it's touching on the poverty, the homelessness, and the earning potential of these students by having a degree in hand. And these are students that were walking down our halls with these units already. So imagine if we didn't have this manual process, and we had an electronic way to do a degree audit to automatically award these students, or help us process these students to have degrees. I think we could serve quite a few students. Thank you.
Fantastic job, you guys. I heard so many mic drops in there. There was a lot of clinking on the ground. When you have found a solution that's in your strategic plan, in your enrollment management plan, that increases the number of ed plans for students, which statistically nationwide, any research institution will show you, will increase their completion, and brings you Triple SP revenue in the process, and students earn 8% more earnings once they complete, and you remove equity barriers, and you bring in more money according to the new funding formula, I think you got some magic. So congratulations to you and the team. It's amazing. We have happened upon some magic here, and I want to congratulate you.
Thank you. And actually, and one of the last pieces that I'd be very regretful if I didn't mention is the collaborative nature of this effort. It was counseling, admissions and records, financial aid, institutional effectiveness, learning and academic resources, Triple SP, Student Equity, Transfer Center, instructional faculty. It was a team effort to really get this going and seeing it executed. So thank all of you that were a part of this effort in the audience, as well as our team here. So thank you, guys.
President Kelleb?
Chair, recognize as trustee Baxter.
I want to salute you for this great work, and I also want to make an observation. It appears to me that this is the first time in my memory, which goes back pretty far, that so many different areas have worked together. And that, you know, thank you for whoever figured that out, and the leadership of U4, and of course, all the other people on campus, but it really is a great tribute, I think, to our staff, that we're all working together toward a common goal, which is to help students graduate. And so, congratulations.
Other members?
I'd like to say first.
Chair, recognize as Vice President Zia.
Just to echo on trustee Baxter's remarks, this is a big testament to the great staff that we have, the great talent, and of course, especially to your leadership, Superintendent President Dr. Romali. I mean, the talent was there. You've capitalized on it. You have taken it to a whole other level, and I'm really grateful to you and grateful to you guys, all of you, for the great and tremendous work you're doing. And I'm sure we're going to see rewards that are multiple folds, and I look forward to seeing that. Thank you.
Thank you. These wonderful people make my job very easy.
Chair recognizes trustee Otto, followed by trustee Malu.
If I was a betting man or just a statistician, I probably would say that we jumped from 71 to 70 in the list of the number of annual awards just by this effort, and that's a huge improvement. So congratulations on that. The hard work, I couldn't help but think about here, which is now that you have these education plans, which were, what we've said for a long, long time, was what everybody needed in order to get moving forward. And we know that there are these courses, the math course and the critical thinking course, and I forget the third one, but that people didn't want to take, they probably didn't want to take them because they were worried about whether they could do well enough in them. And now that they have new plans, and they were helped to get registered, they got to get through these courses. And as I sat here, I was thinking, so how do we keep on top of that? How do we, what's the next intervention to say, hey, we know these are the tough ones, and these are the ones who we got into those classes, so let's have a special effort to monitor them, have an early feedback program, because some of it may just be fear, but some of it may be based on situations that we can address. But it's just staying focused on success. This is no longer about access anymore. It's about success.
Trustee Malu.
You guys always do such a fabulous job. Noel, Jennifer, Sonia, Elijah, you guys just have a great team. Sonia, you reminded me of a student I once had who had 82 units, I believe, no degree, no end in sight, just, you know, taking classes. I do believe in pathways, so I appreciate your passion for speaking on that. I have a question on page 11, if you don't mind, only because the number, the difference is so staggering with the Latino students. Why is that? Is it because, I mean, I'm going to just guess that it has something to do with students signing up, or outreach, or why are there so many Latino students in that population being serviced as opposed to others? I don't know if we can get that up for the public, page 11.
So that's a great question. There's no perfect answer to that. What I can share is that we did work with institutional effectiveness in order to run the query that specifically targeted our students of disproportionate impact. We actually made sure that when we were serving the students, the demographic information was not available for those who were serving the students. They didn't know who they were calling. We knew that the students were of disproportionate impact, but those who were providing the services did not. So those students who came in and were represented was random. The one thing that we know for sure is that they were all of disproportionate impact.
Okay, so the pool was controlled, but the ones who actually responded, that's how they fell in there? That's really interesting, because, I mean, it's such a huge discrepancy. It makes me wonder, you know, what our control group consists of, the thousands of students that are there, are they also majority Hispanic, or is it a little more proportionate in representation?
So this actually reflects our student population in that we're 59% Latino students here at Long Beach City College, so we would anticipate to see some similarity to our student demographic.
Thank you. Got it. I appreciate it. Thank you.
This issue is huge, and I don't want to make Long Beach City College seem like we're the only one that has this problem. When I asked that original question, is if you go to all 72 districts, they're all struggling with the same. If you really lump us all together, and then you have to look at the different districts, certain districts are different in so many ways. But at the end of it all, this is why you're seeing the state of California, even the federal government start to look in, because it's all about completion. As much as we love you students to be here, we don't want you to live here. We want you to move on with your life because people are coming right behind you, and if you, as a district, do not address it, it always happens, the state government, the federal government comes in and says, okay, it's all about completion. Years ago, about a decade ago now, we were actually struggling with, we were having, where certain courses, we're having a 3% completion rate, successfully completion, which means, if you want to go the optimistic way, pessimist, that 97% of people weren't completing a course. And it put us in a real dilemma because we had to start jettisoning certain type of courses, programs. But I appreciate the fact we're seriously addressing this. We still have all the answers, but at least we're moving in that right direction to try to find what the issues are that we can get people through. The amazing thing to me is when they have 60 or more units, and they're just sitting here, that's even more disturbing because it's, you have to start wondering, as was raised, what are the reasons why they're here? And there can be a multitude of those. Actually, this is a great discussion, which I'm probably going to throw this team. The state organization always deals with issues statewide, and this report, I think, would be really of value to the statewide organization to go and do a presentation, because, as I mentioned, every district deals with this, and it's something we all have to really get our arms around. So I'll be curious to get more information just right here. We could have spent, well, this could be an all-day seminar, really, and how we're addressing the issues. Pathways is critical. We didn't have that before, you know, people were just showing up. Unfortunately, people like myself, where you have athletes, you're required to get done in a certain period of time. You have eligibility factors. That's why you see athletes' completion rates so quick, because they can't be around. So it really is pretty fascinating, all the data that's here, and trying to get to the reasoning on why some people are doing it, but more importantly for us, to get them to complete it, because we, as a college, get credit for that. That's becoming more and more, as we're seeing in these, with the way we're going to start getting financial support from the state. It's all going to be based on completions, things like that. I used to always tell people that if you put it in with our financial process, what we have with FTS, and it sounds so minimal, but if every class had one more student, your issues would be resolved. And that sounds so simple, but yet, it's true. If everyone had one more student taking a full-credit course, look what the impact would be on you financially. And that's how tedious it is with us. So I appreciate everything you had here. I think it's a wonderful, detailed report with a lot more questions that can be answered, but at least we're starting to address it, and it's very valuable. So I don't want anyone to ever think, though, that Long Beach City College is alone, and we're the only ones dealing with this. Every community college in California is dealing with this in different levels. And even though we're 72 districts, there are colleges that are just dramatically different than Long Beach City College, and there are some that are very similar. So excellent report. It's all about completion, retention, et cetera, et cetera. So it's a valuable tool to look at. So thank you very much.
President Kelleb?
Other members at this time?
President Kelleb?
Yes, student trustee.
I don't know why I just turned off my mic and turned it back on. Thank you so much for the presentation. It's great to see this information. Why don't I make a quick suggestion, or maybe just like an idea that I just kind of thought of, because I'm trying to remember back when I was in high school, and then, you know, leading into college, and then, you know, the whole struggle of how the transition between, I know we have the whole college promise thing with the LBC, with the OBUSD and stuff, but seeing the students that have 60 units and then their age gap. I know back when I was in high school, I was used to, you know, having like a little note sent to my, you know, in my second period or my homeroom period, you know, having the counselors come to me, kind of being almost like cradled and had my hand held throughout the whole process. I was an avid, and that was really helpful back when I was in high school. So being able to detect, at one point, you know, I'm trying to see 60 units, I'm trying to do the math, if every semester you take 15 units, you know, in two years, you'd get 60 units. Yeah. I'm trying to see like what age gap, or like, I mean, what students are the ones who are, you know, starting to realize, well, I have 60 units now, like, where's my degree, or where can I transfer, or whatever, you know, my certificate? And the fact that we're getting students here, and they're just remaining here, it just goes to show that it's just, some students feel like they're lost. That's just kind of what I would do, like, as far as like, maybe a survey, and have them just simple as like, or like, break it down into categories, 18 or like 20, because I know some students during high school, they decided to come to community college at the same time and take courses while during high school. So then those units could be accumulated. So I mean, it could be 19 or 20, and you could already have your 60 units and transfer automatically, or get your degree. Also, during that, the whole event, I know there was like a comment that was made about how a student said that they didn't even know about, that these resources were out there. Maybe gathering some data as far as why do you feel, you know, why do you think, what's your next step? Or, you know, what happened between you arriving at Long Beach City College your first semester and, you know, still being here, like, what's going on? Having an end goal as far as what's your next plan? Because I know a lot of things, you know, community college students definitely go through, you know, struggle from like, experiencing, you know, school debt, and then, you know, having to decide whether it's buying groceries or buying a textbook. I mean, these are just common community college students problems that keep reoccurring. And then finally, pathways. I remember back when I was in middle school, so back in 2011, when I graduated in middle school, 2011, pathways was just a thing that was barely getting into K through 12. And if that, I mean, now that it's being implemented within community colleges, I mean, it just feels like a sense where I know where I'm going, and I have a plan, and, you know, maybe the Plan A, Plan B, and Plan C aren't enough, and I specifically want to go into this field, and this is what I want. So I wish pathways would have came in earlier as far as, you know, now that I'm already going to graduate and move on, but I think this is a critical part for a community college student as well. But overall, thank you so much for the informative presentation.
Thank you. Yes, very well done. Thank you very much. I think we're all sitting here going, when our student trustee says, "Back when I was in high school," you're talking to a group of people. We're all like the Star Wars original, Episode I, and you're now talking about it, you know?
I'm class of 2015 for high schools. I felt like, I don't know.
I don't know who's Yoda and who's Obi-Wan Kenobi, but anyway, great job. Thank you very much, and we look forward to continuing on this. Thank you. Next item is 4.2. This is for our welcome center. For, this again is a presentation. This is all part of our strategic plan enrollment management plan. We've introduced a welcome center at each campus for new students, as well as current students, and this is actually strategy number 25 in the strategic enrollment plan, calling for the examination of retention and completion, et cetera. So this is another important part. So Superintendent President, I will turn it over to you for item 4.2.
Thank you, sir. Hang on to your seats, folks, because the mic drops are going to continue. We, in trying to address the strategic plan and the enrollment management plan, we look at a variety of data. Some of the data that we discovered was that we are not performing at the national average when it comes to what's called conversions, which is taking a student from application to enrollee, the matriculation process. We found that we were significantly, in many cases, below the national average. So we designed a strategy thanks to the counselors and their annual planning that will address that and perform some what-if scenarios. Not only did we execute on it, and you're going to hear about that, but perform some what-if scenarios on some revenue opportunities that we've missed and that we will be able to capture in the future. So the wonderful Marcia Parker, who's the head of community engagement and the head of this project, is going to take us through this exciting detail.
Thank you, President Romali. Good evening, Board of Trustees and our guests for this evening. It's my pleasure to have the opportunity to present to you our strategic plan and enrollment matriculation plan, strategy number 25, our LAC and ECT welcome. So the first thing we wanted to do was really take a look at and really identify the problem. So the national average for community colleges in terms of converting applicants to those who actually enroll in your institution is anywhere from 38% to 42%. Unfortunately, historically, at LBCC- historically, LBCC has fallen below that. So for example, in winter 2017, we converted around 15.1% of our applicants to actually, to actual enrollees. Another example, spring 2018, around 33.8%. So we really need to get a lot closer to that 40%, give or take, national average conversion rate. So what are we doing to address this problem? The Welcome Center assists with enrollment conversion by providing a welcoming environment for incoming students. And it's really a place where, where incoming prospective students can ask questions and receive assistance in completing the enrollment process. So what does this mean for potential full-time equivalent student revenue? So first and foremost, if we are able to get to the 40% conversion rate, our potential revenue is over $900,000. And so we can kind of break that down by semester. So if we look at the summer 2017 semester, for example, previously, we converted, in terms of applicants, to actually enrollees at a rate of 27.5%. If we're able to get up to that 40% conversion rate, that would garner us over $340,000 in additional revenue. So it's really important that we do everything that we can to get to that more national average level, which would be our 40% conversion rate. So this is a list of kind of what we've done thus far. As, as President Ramali mentioned, the Welcome Center was informed by a plan from our counselors, and we really appreciate our counselors for bringing this to the forefront, and bringing this to President Ramali. And so since then, what we've done is, we've had a series of meetings to really get started with the soft launch of the Welcome Center. And so we were very excited to have launched the Welcome Center last week, on April 17. And then we're moving forward with additional brainstorming, to have more of a hard launch, and, and a full launch, starting on June 27. So for our summer launch, as, as has been mentioned, summer registration is going to open on May the 7th. And so the Welcome Center at both campuses, one at the LAC campus, as well as one at the PCC campus, successfully soft-launched last week on April 17. So we're all good to go and set for our summer registration period. So these are some pictures, this was actually our first day on April 17. So this is a picture of the PCC location, and we have our, our student and team members, our peer mentors, and our counselors here. And then this is a picture of a similar setup at our LAC location. And so the services provided at, at both locations include, individuals can get information on scheduling a tour, they can get assistance with their application and counseling services, they can have an educational plan put together, and just general guidelines to assist students in navigating the enrollment process. These are the hours for the Welcome Center at both locations. And this is just a general overview of the structure of the Welcome Center at both locations. So at LAC, the Welcome Center is located in the A Building, room 1001. There's really tall flags in front of both Welcome Centers. And at PCC, the, the Welcome Center is located in the AA Building Lobby, room 101. And at each Welcome Center, we have at least one peer mentor, we have a counselor, and then we have a staff, staff person onsite to serve as a resource for our student team members, should they have additional questions. Going forward for the fall registration, you may know that fall registration launches on July 2nd. So our plan is to have the Welcome Center kind of fully launched in a more robust fashion in advance of that date. This slide shows one of the meetings that we had for our brainstorming for our Welcome Center. And one of the things that I'm really thankful for is that this has been a truly collaborative process. And so at this particular meeting, we have faculty, unions, students, Senate, managers, classified staff, really all coming together to provide ideas for what we want to do to make this the best Welcome Center that we can. And so these slides just kind of list some example suggestions that were provided from this comprehensive brainstorming session. So as we look forward to our full launch, and even with our current soft launch, how are we going to measure our success? So how will we know if the Welcome Center worked? So what you have in front of you is an actual screenshot of the tally sheet that we are using on a daily basis at both locations. And so what happens is, each time a visitor comes into the Welcome Center, the student, peer mentor will greet them and assist them, and then they will write on here, you know, this is the type of question that this person asked, and this is the category that it goes in, and they might have some additional notes there in column M. And so what we're going to be able to do is use all of these tally sheets to really inform what we want to do moving forward for our full launch, as well as any additional evaluation tools that we want to develop. And so in closing, thus far, we have not been meeting the national average of the 40% conversion rate from applicants to enrollees. And so using the Welcome Center as a tool, we have the potential to garner $621,000 in terms of our return on investment, which will really allow us to further maximize our revenue opportunities for the college. That's my brief presentation, are there any questions?
Questions, members of the board, Chair Recognizes Trustee Baxter, followed by Trustee Malauulu.
Yeah, hi, Marcia, good report. I, and I, I'm, I want to go first, so I steal this from Trustee Malauulu. But we went to Washington DC two years ago, and this, this was an idea that was brought up, and they, the exercise was, how welcoming is your school, you know, how do, if you walk on campus, how do you feel? And, and both, and both campuses, and both of us said, there's no center, there's no, you know, nothing to draw people in. So I'm, I'm so pleased with this, and I think that's fantastic. Then secondly, to build on my many years of serving hot dogs, I think when you do your hard launch on July 2nd, you ought to have food, because that will draw people too. And, and there's something about, a crowd brings a bigger crowd. And so if people see people, then they, oh, what's going on, I'm going to go over there and find out what's going. So they always have hot dogs in the summer, so make sure you get your hot dogs on July 2nd.
Approved.
I won't be here, but I'll believe you.
That was, that was one of the, I apologize, that was one of the key suggestions from our student participants in the brainstorming session.
It's student life, Dean Ramone is still here, so he's listening, I know, to me. Yes, he's got it, okay. So he's in charge of the hot dogs.
Students, we love food.
Chair recognizes Trustee Malauulu.
Thank you for reminding me, Trustee Baxter, that's not what I was going to say, but yes, what she just said. I just have a quick question, and, and maybe you said it and I missed it, but where exactly are the two Welcome Centers on each campus?
Sure. So at LAC, it's over at the A Building, kind of, when you first walk in the A Building, if you're coming from this side of campus. And then at PCC, it's in the AA Building, kind of in that lobby area there.
Okay, the only, the only suggestion that, that I'd like to make is that we put something in the parking lots, because one of the problems that some of our students face is, they, they can find the parking, because they'll be traveling on Clark, or wherever they are, and they, they park. And then from there, it becomes so overwhelming, because they see, I actually helped an elderly student from trying to get to the E Building, but he had parked on the southwest, southeast corner of Clark and Carson, and he didn't know that there was a parking right next to the E Building, and it would have taken him too long to walk. So I had to kind of redirect him, you know, it'll be faster if you get in your car and drive, and you can actually park right in front, there's meter. So somewhere in the parking lot, if we can put something that says Welcome Center, stop here, first, you know, maybe we can do like a number one, first stop, and then tell them where to go. That way, once they get to the Welcome Center, from there, they can get a map, they can get a, you know, maybe think about that with your committee. Same thing for PCC. PCC is a little easier to navigate, with the one parking lot, it's just easier, but here, it can be, it could be challenging.
Definitely, I agree. I think signage for parking, and how to get to the Welcome Center from parking, excellent suggestion, thank you.
Other questions, members of the board at this time? Student Trustee, you're over there, you look like you're.
I was like, I was, I was going to say something regarding the parking and whatnot, because I mean, when we, when the students arrive on campus, the first thing we arrive to is parking. And if it's like the first two weeks of, of class, there's usually no parking. So suggestion in the beginning, specifically like the first, maybe three weeks, just having like one of the, the stands right there by Vet Stadium, I think that would just, definitely just increase the, the amount of people, and, and I mean, simply as just giving them a map and showing them where to go, or where exactly, because a lot of students do not know where exactly the class is, or what building am I in, or, you know, all sorts of that. And secondly, on the maps that we do have on campus, I know that we have like, like, there's like the big, they're pretty big, they're like surrounded all over campus. On it, is it already updated, that says Welcome Center, right there on the, on the, for the building?
I guarantee you it's not.
I'm not sure that it is, so that's an excellent point, and we will make sure and address that. And, and I also really love what you're saying about, that we've, we've seen great success with our pop-up tent advertising summer registration, so having a pop-up tent, first couple, two, three weeks of class, and directing people to the Welcome Center.
Yeah, definitely the most traffic spots, I mean, students will park at Vet Stadium, and then the ones who cross the street constantly. I mean, I crossed the street probably like three or four times.
Other questions, comments? We always like to say, there is parking, it's just not convenient parking.
I just have one comment.
Trustee Zia.
President Kellogg, thank you. So thank you so much, I know this is your first time presenting, and it's been lovely, I've heard great things about you, and I could see why. So just want to really thank you for a wonderful presentation, and welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Other members at this time? None? Thank you very much. We are now at the Consent Calendar, this is items 5.5, 5.18. The Student Trustee, with the exception of item 5.17, 5.18, which he cannot vote on, so if there's any items need to be removed at this time for further discussion, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Consent Calendar in its entirety, motion by Trustee Zia, second by Trustee Baxter. Questions, comments? Madam Secretary, please call the roll, the Consent Calendar, items 5.5 to 5.18, please.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Absent.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
And Student Trustee Chavez?
Aye.
Thank you, we're now to Human Resources, item 6.1, Employment Contract. This is for Marlene Dunn, Vice President of Business Services. This is an action item.
So moved.
As, as required, I'll, I'll ask for the motion. The Employment Contract provides for a term of employment from May 15, 2018, through June 3, 2020. The contract provides for an annual compensation of $222,480, along with health and welfare benefits and life insurance. Entertained a motion, and second please, motion by Trustee Zia, second by Trustee Otto. Questions, comments on this item at this time? Hearing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
And Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Thank you, congratulations. And all these items on the employment, the Student Trustee will not be voting. 6.2, Employment Contract, Susan Bricker, Interned Executive Dean, Enrollment Services. The Employment Contract provides for a term of employment from June 1, 2018, through June 3, 2019. The contract provides for an annual compensation of $178,076, along with the health and welfare benefits and life insurance. Entertained a motion, and second please, motion by Trustee Malauulu, second by Trustee Zia. Questions, comments, members of the board at this time? Hearing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on item 6.2.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
And Sunny Zia?
Aye.
That motion carries, we're item 6.3, Student Trustee will not be voting on this item. This is a supplemental employment retirement plan, this is an action item. Recommended action is that the Board of Trustees approve a resolution to establish a supplemental employment retirement plan for certain eligible employees of the district, effective June 1, 2018. Superintendent President, do you want anything before I have the, let me ask you this time, could I have, entertain a motion, a second for discussion purposes?
So moved.
Motion by Trustee, I didn't hear, but I'm going to say Trustee Baxter, second by Trustee Malauulu. Questions, comments, Superintendent President, comments at this time?
None at this time.
None at this time, members of the board at this time, on this item? Chair recognizes Trustee Otto.
I understand that this, the analysis that, that we've reviewed shows that there are benefits to the district, depending on whether adequate people decide to participate in this program. I want to be clear that if it doesn't appear to be beneficial based on those numbers, we can back out of this. Is that, is that true?
Well, it's going to be the Vice President, Superintendent President's going to answer that one, I don't know why you're looking over at me.
Yes, according to Keenan and Associates, it does need to pencil out for us to be able to do it. So if we do not get enough people to participate in the program, we do not have to go through with it, we would not want to be in a disadvantageous position.
Other members at this time, on this item? I will make a, a brief comment, and I bore everyone, because they've heard me say this in the past, the same. This is an item, as we make it, it was, in the past, it's been actually part of our labor negotiations with our full-time faculty. This one isn't going to include all the different groups as well, it's just not the full-time faculty. I, I personally have always had issues with this as well, for a multitude of reasons, one where the people may not like or dislike, but it has been proven legally that we are fine, we have, we're showing the bottom line, it's to save money. It just always has been difficult for me to give essentially a, whatever the amount is, in the past, dollar amount, 30, I believe, $30,000, $35,000. It was always something I, I just felt was, it just was something I, I always had difficulty with supporting. I understand the bottom line, I understand what it has. I also, on this one, because it now has expanded, I'm concerned, because it has somewhat of an effect on us in many ways. We, actually, last time, I want to say we had over 30 full-time faculty members that took advantage of this, which was more than we thought. Our concern, because we have a faculty obligation number, FON, and we also had difficulty sometimes hiring our full-time faculty to meet the FON, and if we don't meet the FON, then we are fined a number, and so all these factors come into play. The fact that it's expanded as well, my concern was that some of the other, some of the other of our constituency groups, I feel sometimes are treated more unfairly than others. In this, I don't think it's to their advantage in many ways. So just overall, I've always had, and I've always sort of known on this, but it's always moved forward, because a lot of people just look at us from the retirement, saving money, dropping down our costs because we're not paying at the higher end. But I just think that we're, we have some difficult times coming before us, this board, this college. And I, I hope it doesn't have the same effect that I've seen in the past, and what I mean by that, when I, I watch the certain groups, constituency groups, they, they start taking impact when you have a downward cycle. We are now not filling certain management positions, that responsibility is still there, but yet the position is not filled, that has an impact on the college. In the past, our classified staff has taken the blunt of a lot of these issues financially, and I don't think that's fair. And so there's a lot of things that come into it, but for the discussion tonight, it is a supplemental employment retirement plan. We have people have come to us that it is good, bottom line. At the end of it all, though, I just have great difficulty always supporting something that, and one of the enticers I would just share with you is, people just always turn to me and say, well, you know, so-and-so is on the list, and we can get rid of that person. And I always jokingly said, and it's not a joke, but I go, look, there's always somebody on the list that you don't like, or you, that's not really the issue. The issue for me is that I'm giving someone a amount of money, whether they were good or bad, they're giving the same amount of money, and I just find that difficult, and I always have. So that's my disclaimer, why I vote no all the time, but we'll move forward. Other members this time? Madam Secretary? Trustee Malauulu?
I, I would also like to, I concur with what Trustee Kellogg said, that it, there are a lot of factors that go into play when considering a decision like this. This is also something else that we had a lengthy discussion about in closed session. The bottom line is always, I believe, finding that sweet spot, and what's the best for the district, but also, what's the best finding that sweet spot in what's the best for the district, but also what's the best for individuals who are eligible, whether it's financially prudent for them and their family to retire or not, and the impact that it will have on the district. It's, it's not as easy as it sounds to find that balance. And that's why there are so many elaborate and sophisticated charts, and steps, and tiers, and years of service, and education. They do that for a reason. And one thing I did hear that I thought was very interesting, when considering retirement, is it, you know, we, we offer incentives, but at the same time, it has to be something that works both ways. So even though the incentive might help an individual, in the long run, the health of the college, the financial health of the district is also something that we need to consider, and vice versa. So we can't just make a decision based on this is going to save the district money down the line, where, you know, an individual might suffer also. So it, there's a balance that we have to take into consideration. And also, I'm very keen and receptive and open to what the constituent groups want. And that's why we're here, and that's why the discussion has been opened. And I believe, Rose, there's a meeting tomorrow. There will be a meeting tomorrow. So we're very interested in hearing what our constituent groups have to say too. So, you know, it's a two-way street. We, we are not in the business of dictating what's going to happen without taking careful consideration of what people feel and the information that's being provided. Thank you. And the meeting was already set?
Yes, and just to confirm, we do have meetings with both unions.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just add?
Assistant trustee Zia?
I just want to make a point of clarification, that there, this isn't intended to target anyone. It's very important that we be very careful about the language we use when it comes to these types of items. This is something that has been provided in the past. It has been received well, and it was to the best interest of the district. And I have every confidence in our leadership that what they've brought forward has been well thought out as we deliberated in closed session. So I don't see this as necessarily prescriptive. This is a two-way street, as trustee Malauulu touched on, and I'm really thankful to her for bringing that up, so that it's clear for the members of the public, that this is going to be something that we're not mandating, or it's not an edict. It's subject to negotiation with our constituency groups. Just want to make that clear.
Other members? Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
No.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
And Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Thank you. Item 6.3 carries. Next item, six point?
Seven point one.
Next to item seven, I'm sorry. This is the, this is informational, status of a request of waiver for use proceeds for the district's sale of the Los Coyotes diagonal property. Again, informational items. So at this time, superintendent president?
Thank you. As you know, a few months ago, the district approved a resolution whereby we could go to the California Board of Governors, and ultimately the legislature, to try and seek approval to get the proceeds from the Los Coyotes property to go into our trust for retiree benefits once the property sells. At that time, we were told by the chancellor's office that they would not place it on the Board of Governors' agenda. So we went the legislative route and tried to get it through, passed through legislation. Senator Janet Nguyen gracefully and very supportively wanted to, agreed to carry this for us through the legislature. However, some new information has come forward. We have been told that the Senate Education Committee intends to kill it and put it back into committee until such time as we go through the California Board of Governors and either get an acceptance or rejection. Now, a year, almost a year has gone by, so circumstances have changed, so we do not know if they would be open to it at this point in time or not. So we wanted to get bond counsel's legal opinion on that. Bond counsel did say that while you can do it, they have concerns. And we wanted to bring those concerns here to you today, because they're very real. And that has to do with the fact that the Long Beach District voters voted for a specific set of revenue and a specific set of projects. This does not fall within that. So if we go outside the original intent, the original intent of the voters with the bond was, if the property sold, the proceeds would go back into the capital funds. To do something different than that is outside what the voters did vote on. So there are some complications on that. So what I wanted to do is leave the decision here and get your advice as to how you want to proceed. The decision is go ahead and approach the Board of Governors again, and see if we can get it on the agenda, or let it drop. It would mean approximately Betty Miller, $1.7 million to the general fund. So I wanted to put that out there for a discussion, an information item.
Members of the board, she, really, I, it is informational, it's essentially, it's some direction. I, if you had comments in the past, we've, this, I don't know if you did, I was filling out some forms as we were going. The, this item did come before us for a vote with this current board. It was a four-one vote. I was the one vote that did not want to move forward with it. Again, taking the proceeds from the sale of the property, when and if that does take place, and taking that money and using it in a specific area, is not probably going to have a legislative life, because the, as was mentioned, multiple reasons. My, my feelings from when I voted against this was strictly on, I just felt it was, it wasn't the, it wasn't an appropriate way to, in my mind, shifting the money, that the money we used for the purchase of the Los Coyotes property. In a very simplistic way, I said the money should return exactly where it started. It did not start in our retirement area. That money was not in that fund. We took that money out, and we used it to purchase the Los Coyotes property. And now, once we sell the property, we're gonna return it to that fund. It didn't start there, and then we can get into the whole discussion about where it did start, and so on, so forth. But that was really my fundamental reason why I was opposed to taking this money when the sale of property does take place, when and if it ever takes place, that money should go back to the original point that it started, that it came from. And that was my whole, that was my whole reason to oppose it at the time. That said, we are now asked to, as the superintendent president has mentioned, we now have to go to the state chancellor to see if they are willing to help us in this, in this area. So unless there is a difference, we are, we are on record on a four-one vote. Unless people feel differently, I believe that's what we're still going to continue. But the question was, you were saying, asking if we wanted to go back to the chancellor and try to pursue it.
I do want to see if anyone has changed their mind, because I have as well. Jeff and I agree with you, excuse me, President Kellogg. There are concerns with, with, that bond counsel has expressed that I think we need to pay attention to.
I just want to ask for clarification purposes. So what is, this isn't an action. This is just a point of information, correct?
Correct, correct.
And the information is that we want to ask, it's just hard to tell from the description that's provided, is the action that we're requesting the money go back to the capital funds? Are we, or we're requesting for it to go in our operating funds?
We can, at this point, with the state legislator and the chancellor's office, we're nowhere. So what that means is that this, at this point in time today, if the property sells, the money goes back into the capital funds. Or we could go forward and proceed with the, to the chancellor's office, ask that it be put on the Board of Governors. If it gets put on and is approved, the money would go to the retiree liability fund. Bond counsel has expressed some concern with that. So the choice is do nothing right now, and it goes back into the capital outlay fund, or do we want to keep being, pursue this and approach the chancellor's office, Board of Governors with this?
Okay, I see. So are you requesting feedback right now to see if we should agendize this item again for subsequent meeting to take action? Is that what the request is?
We can do that. My position right now is that we should probably leave it, leave it as is.
And not request the waiver?
Not request the waiver. However, I wanted to get you all's opinion to see if you thought you disagreed with that, or if you agreed with that.
Okay.
President, President Kellogg, may I ask a question?
Yeah, then I think trustee Zia though, that, so she has a question there, but.
I just, I just wanted to understand what we're, we're doing here. So my input would be that we punt and not take action, let it go to the capital fund, as the, as intended by the voters. That would be my position, given the circumstances and the information provided here.
And so I just, because of the issue, and I'm sorry, trustee Baxter, I know you're hiding behind me, I'm looking over trustee Zia there. The, the question, I, my understanding was the question really now before us is that, do you still want to go to the chancellor's office and ask if they are willing to do, for lack of a better term, I'm gonna say waiver, because this has never been done before that I'm aware of. Really, and that's really the step that we were going to take originally, to go to the chancellor and see if they would do that. Then they, then we got into this question, it has to go to the legislature. Legislature then turned around and said, no, it has to go to the chancellor. So we're sort of back to square one, regardless of the sale of the property. At the time, we thought the property was going to be sold. We had a time period, other factors. So I believe the question now is not so much of where the money will go, when and if it does sell, which I think we all agree is, is still a challenge, but more of, do you want to pursue? And correct me, superintendent president, but now is a question, though, do you want to do what we originally had the vote on, is to go to the chancellor and ask the chancellor's office to put this on the Board of Governors' agenda, to allow Long Beach City College to actually pursue this, if and when the property sells, that we can take that funding, and we can use it in the way over towards the retirement. So we're somewhat back to square one on this one. And that is what I understand the question, what really input you have. And there's really no action item right now. If superintendent president doesn't hear anything differently, we were going to go back to the chancellor and ask, as we originally had voted on a year or so ago.
So I guess, just to clarify, my position, when I mean punt, is not to go back to the chancellor's office and then just let it go?
I agree. That's my position as well, unless I hear advice differently. Do not do anything, do not go back to the chancellor's office. Let the money go back to the capital outlay fund as the voters intended. That is my position, and I'm hearing two so far.
What, my question?
Let it drop.
I'm sorry, chair. I'm sorry, trustees, trustee Baxter.
Two questions. First of all, was bond money used to purchase the property?
Yes and no. It was purchased with COP, Certificates of Participation.
Right, right.
In, when Henry Gable wrote the bond language, the bond paid off the COPs.
Oh, okay.
So effectively, the bond paid off the COPs that bought the property.
Okay.
Betty Miller, have I got that correctly?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So then that was the other question I had, was why would bond counsel be against us going, and now I see why, because I, I have to tell you, I knew in the beginning, there was no bond when that property was bought. So I knew that my bond money couldn't have been used.
Yeah.
Okay, but eventually it was used. So, okay. I, I agree with you, President Malauulu.
The bond money did pay off the COPs which purchased the property.
And just for, again, because why this came up, is because we have an issue with our retirement fund. We're going to have, we have a financial obligation to do that with our financial situation the way it is. This was a, at the time, with then Vice President Gable, of how we could address that and help fund that legally, which would help us overall financially. So it was, it was creative financing, but it was something that she thought would work, and that's what we voted on originally. And so there, there were reasons behind it, and that was it. Now, the question that I asked before, and I'll just answer the question that I raised, is that the fact that now, if we don't do this, the fund that we have there, the money that's sitting in, are we going to be obligated for more, or have we already calculated, regardless of the action we take? And the answer I got was, no, we have, we have put the money, we have addressed that issue. So it's not going to now, at this point in time, require us to put additional funding somehow, some way. I probably simplified it, but I was worried about, if this doesn't go through, there is suddenly a giant financial hole that had to be filled. And my, the answer I got at the time was, no, that's not an issue. This was only going to help us address the issue, but it wasn't going to cause us any negative effects at all. So if I'm wrong on that, correct me?
If I can. This would have been an enormous step forward for the district in being able to finish funding that outstanding obligation. The approach made a great deal of sense, given the information available at the time. The district has not removed from its budget payments into that fund, because it has a process of paying a certain amount out of the general fund into the irrevocable trust, as well as a pool of dollars that are maintained at the county office of education, that are separate and identified for this purpose. It was never the intent to put all of the dollars from the sale into the irrevocable trust, but it was intended to put a significant portion of it. Match it then with the dollars that were already set aside at the county, would have fully funded your outstanding obligation. So it was a plan that made sense. It was a plan that could have worked. And the wrinkle that came into play kind of late in the game was the fact that the bond dollars did pay off the COPs. There is a small portion of the dollars that still has a question mark on it, and it is advised that those dollars could and should probably stay with the bond program, and that is the appreciated value of a portion of the property. There may not be a legal requirement to keep it there, but the general sentiment is that if bond dollars did support it, those things that were bond dollars should go back to the bond program. Those things that are capital outlays should go to the capital outlay fund.
Thank you. Other members? Trustee Otto?
Yeah. I I am I'm very worried in general about the unfunded responsibilities we have for retiree health benefits, and indeed, what's going to happen to retiree benefits in general when from this year, when we pay 9% to, to CalPERS, and by 2025, we will be paying 26%, 25% to CalPERS. And I have no idea where that money's going to come from in a time of potentially declining enrollment and stiff competition between us and surrounding community college districts. And so the idea that we could have monies to take care of this particular obligation was very seductive. And we proceeded because it looked like there was a way to do that. In reading the bond counsel's draft letter, I haven't seen the final one, it basically says, well, if SB 1193 was passed as an urgency legislation, and at this point, it's not contemplated as urgency legislation, then a portion could be used to potentially pay down that obligation legally. Although, in the quick reading of this, which I've just looked at today, I'm not even sure about that analysis. So I don't support going to the legislature, excuse me, to the chancellor's office, the Board of Governors, to, to support this, unless something happens to SB 1193, that I don't anticipate happening. But I am laser-focused on getting rid of those obligations. In addition to the, we thought $16 million, significantly less than that, that we might be able to set aside to pay down that obligation, we be able to set aside to pay down that obligation, we have about $15 million in, in the county fund that we might be, we would be able to access. I think the obligation is somewhere around, is it 29 million or 30?
That's correct.
Yeah. So I am concerned about our fiscal future. We have a board goal that talks about the importance of being financially responsible, and, and I look for every opportunity to do that. I just don't see it here now, but if something changes, if we can go after and get even some of these monies in order to pay down those obligations, I think it would be a great deal. And since we're not voting on this, we could always come back to this if things change.
Yeah, if I may, I do want to provide you with some reassurance that the district has a payment plan.
Of course.
That is included in your general fund budget to address the required contributions to this fund, so that it will ultimately be funded. It will take a great deal of time, and that's based on actuarial studies, which I believe have been shared with, with the board in the past.
Other questions, comments?
Yeah, I just, I just want to make, I have an understanding, when we first saw this action come before us, when we took action, it was my understanding that it was based on the bond council's recommendation. Is that not the correct understanding? Because that's what, at least that's what I was under the impression, was that not the case?
That it, that was the case.
It was the case.
There is an opinion statement from bond council. The primary focus of that particular document talks about the taxable versus non-taxable aspects of the property. There is an occupied section and another section that the district has been leasing. There were some issues related to those revenue streams, which have since been resolved, and that was when the COP aspect of it was addressed. And so that's the portion, because that's how the district acquired the property, they didn't take the next step then to how were the COPs then ultimately paid off.
Right, no, my question is more, I want to get crystal clear on this, because if our bond council originally recommended that we proceed, because, I mean, they had to have reviewed it, that's the premise that I went based on. If they, if it wasn't, if it was something that I missed or misunderstood, that's what I like to understand, because if they reversed their recommendation, that's what I want to know, the original recommendation.
I don't believe they reversed the recommendation, because that aspect of the recommendation still holds and was being followed. This introduced additional new information to the picture that wasn't part of that original conversation.
So in their original recommendation, did they say you can use the money legally to fund your retiree benefits?
It was the intent that the proceeds from the occupied portion of the sale could be used towards meeting that unfunded obligation, but it would require legislation or board of governors. It was very clear that the way the education code is currently written, that it would have to go back into capital outlay funds unless there was something that overrode that particular legislation.
And that, and that recommendation has not changed? They're still saying?
There's still tax consequences that are involved with that particular property.
So their recommendation is not really based on whether or not you should do it or not, their trepidation is that there's tax consequences. It's more a business decision for us to make, whether or not we want to proceed and go that route. I, I have an issue, I did not recognize this in the game, and perhaps it wasn't crystallized, or maybe I missed it, that we are going to be using what the voters, the attempt was to get a waiver from what the voters had voted on. So I'm vehemently against getting that waiver and going to the legislature's office, now that I know the full breadth of the information presented.
Yeah, and things were followed to be consistent with legal requirements, and this would have as well, with the regulations changed. And like I say, there's additional information and a different view of what needed to be taken by council.
Good, great, thank you.
Other members? Chair of the House trustee Malauulu?
Yes, just really briefly, I, I know that this is not an action item, and you just want a recommendation or an opinion, but I, I'm a firm believer that doubt means don't, and we've been talking about this for so long. And everything happens for a reason. They, you know, we would vote on something, take an action, make a recommendation, and then the following meeting, come back, and it couldn't happen, they didn't do it, it wasn't possible, it wasn't within the budget. So I think at some point, we just have to back off and, you know, either revisit it later, or, you know, just find some alternate solution, because this is, this is not going away as easily as we thought. So let's put a stop, you know, put the brakes on it, and I hope that that's the recommendation that you're looking for.
Yeah, it's my recommendation that we not proceed, that the, that we drop it, that the funds from the proceeds of the sale, when it sells, go back into the bond funds as the original voters voted.
Other members? Chair of the House trustee Otto?
Yeah, just one last point about this, we're talking about proceeds from the sale of this property. This property is not in escrow. This property will not be in escrow for perhaps as long as a year, given the due diligence periods that we are now living in. So it certainly is at least premature to, to worry about this, about what we're going to do, although it does take a long time for the board of governors to consider these things. We've been to them once before on this property. It is the only thing that's lasted longer than trustee Kellogg on this board, I think. So, so, so I'm not worried if we don't take action to move forward.
All right, other members at this time? And I, to the credit of the board and the college, I just, we'll leave it, because I obviously made my point. The one thing, though, that the college takes very seriously is the, our commitment to retirees. That is a constituent of the group that isn't always right in front of us, is pounding on us about what they need in labor negotiations, but you, we as a college, we realize we have a moral obligation to make sure those retirement benefits are there for people. We have seen many cases in the, not so much in the public, but in the private sector, where people that were depending on retirement benefits, et cetera, disappear. And so, so to the credit of the college, this was being done in the pursuit of trying to make sure that retirement fund is fully funded, because as trustee Otto did mention, there's a lot of other financial issues that are going to be coming forward, that is going to have to address us. And, and this issue, by the way, again, is another one that everyone has to address, and it's there. And there's been many times about, it's a cliff that if we don't address, and it was mentioned, we have a plan, but it's, it's frightening that we make sure that we do address this, because again, that's a moral obligation we have, and we are trying to do it. And this was just a, it was a creative way of trying to address it, it's just something that I could never get my arms around and feel comfortable with. But, so I think that's all we really need as far as discussion. Give me some direction on that. Trustee Otto?
Say, very, very briefly, I think that our obligation for retirement, retiree benefits is in a horse race for what we morally should do with our obligation to the voters who gave us this money in the first place, bond money, and that we are absolutely obligated to not use these, any of these monies in any way that isn't consistent with what the law requires us to do with bond money.
All right, thank you. I obviously didn't do a better job explaining myself when this vote originally came up, then. Nonetheless, that's informational, no actions required. We're now on to administrative services, 8.1. This is a, this is a, this is an action item, student trustee will be voting, is on public entity investment trust board resolution. Essentially, this is necessary to update the members with current positions that we have, with new hires, there's different titles now, so this essentially is just correcting that. Could I entertain a motion?
So moved.
This is a motion by trustee Zia, second by trustee Otto, on this item. Questions, comments, members of the board at this time on item 8.1. Hearing done. Madam Secretary, please call the rule.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
And Sunny Zia?
Aye.
And student trustee Chavez?
Aye.
We're now to reports, 9.1, academic senate president.
I don't have any report for this month. Thank you.
Thank you. Out of mind, I too, classified senate president.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that as far as the supplemental employment retirement plan that you guys voted on tonight, that it's very appreciative that it has been extended to all constituent groups in the past. It hasn't always been that way, and it feels like it's, it's, we feel that we're more appreciated, respected, and there's more equity involved. So just wanted to extend that appreciation, thank you.
Thank you. 9.3, superintendent president?
Yes, just one announcement for the citizens oversight committee, Stella Ursua will not be continuing for another term on the COC, as she has other commitments, and we want to thank her for her service. We're currently accepting applications for a member at large through May 18th. We'll have it posted on our website. An ad was posted in the Press Telegram on April 19th, and the press release will be going out this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Student trustee, 9.4.
I'm at 7:23, and I made it this far, and I got one more meeting after this.
I was just going to ask that.
Yeah. So I got a pretty decent report. First off, I'd like to begin by reporting that I was able to sit down with Antonio Ries from Palacio Magazine this past month, and it was interesting having my first ever, or being part of my first ever podcast. I don't, I don't believe it's still live yet, but I know that he's interviewed Mayor Robert Garcia, along with President Reagan Romali, on, on a variety of topics. And once again, that's through Palacio Magazine. Then later that day, President Salsedo, candidate Jaren, and I met with SMB supervisor Dave, and we presented him the comments and input of the students regarding the menu of the ASB Viking food court, and thankfully, that input was well appreciated by Dave. Furthermore, this month is sexual assault awareness month, and the office, the office of student affairs has hosted an abundant of activities for this month, ranging from the consent days that began in the month of March, here at the PC Quad, to the March 29th event here at the LAC E Quad. And then this week, they're hosting heal, healing through yoga, that actually happened today. They ended up kicking out all the students from the fishbowl, and they just had a complete silence, yoga, like a yoga routine, and that was pretty interesting. And then tomorrow, they're hosting the denim day, and then along with the workshop of healthy relationships here at the LAC campus. In addition, for the month of May, it's known as mental health awareness month, and the office of student affairs will also be hosting a variety of events, working with the healthy, healthy Viking initiative, and they'll be hosting a variety of movies to combat mental health. Moreover, as President Salsedo mentioned, there are ASB elections, and they began today at 8:00 AM. We currently have two candidates running for student trustee, Donnell Jones and Joe Sanchez. Whoever becomes elected, I'll be setting up a meeting with them and guiding them through the process of how to successfully be a student trustee and passing on the torch of disposition. Finally, I end on exciting news. A couple meetings ago, back when we had our last meeting at PC campus in January, I mentioned that I was working on my USC application, then trustee Otto mentioned that for the next meeting, I had to give an update whether I ended up submitting it or not. For the month of February, I went ahead and I had mentioned that I'd submitted on time, and everything went perfect. Now, in the last meeting of March, I mentioned my current acceptances, which were Cal State LA, UC Santa Barbara, and UC Irvine. Now, for today's meeting, I'm happy to announce that I got accepted into USC, and so far...
I'm so sorry.
And so far, that, that's to be my number one choice. I'll be hearing from UC San Diego tomorrow, and hopefully UCLA by Thursday. However, at the moment, it seems that I'll be joining the Trojan family. Thank you.
My condolences.
Obviously, there's not a USC fan up here, so it's like, yeah, yeah, congratulations, that's really great, yeah, really.
Thank you.
Uh huh. Go Trojans, congratulations. You just set yourself back in my eyes, but that's another whole thing entirely, but congratulations, that's fantastic.
I feel like I'm bullied up here now, it's like.
You are being bullied.
All right, we're now to board of trustees, I'm going to ask, rotate them, trustee Zia, Baxter, Malauulu, and Otto, starting with Vice President Zia, please.
Thank you, President Kellogg. Just a couple of points, I want to first mention that the 35th annual golf tournament is coming up on Thursday, May 10th. This is for our, it's being sponsored by LBCC Foundation Athletics Associates, and the proceeds are going to go to our city college student athletes, and our very own, our brilliant and beautiful, very own trustee Baxter is going to be honored, so I encourage everyone to go. It's actually a very decent price, so you can go on to, hold on, let me get the address, lbccvikings.com/golf, and be, register online. I also wanted to let folks know that on October 10th, 2018, between 7:30 AM and 5:30 PM, there's going to be a summit on what's been happening in schools throughout the country and violence, the violences that we've seen. One of the very bright former police officers with Long Beach PD, Joseph Levy, is actually hosting the Safe School Summit. It's filled with great opportunities, and I wanted to just invite administrators, educators, students to inquire about it. I'm going to send the information about, about the summit to our superintendent president, so stay tuned. But if you want to go and check it out, it's, just if you Google embassyconsultingservices.com/safeschoolsummit, I think it'll be informative and very relevant. We have some of our local educators, and Chief Luna is also going to be there presenting. So it'll, it's very informative. If anybody has any questions and wants to participate, please do connect with me, and I'm happy to pass on the information. That's all I have, President Kellogg.
Trustee Baxter, followed by trustee Malauulu.
Okay, first of all, and I can't believe that Jorge didn't bring up the plant sale, which is May 11th, right? And I, are you happy?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I'm just checking before I announce. But every year, the horticulture plant sale has been an overwhelming success, and I was disappointed when, when nothing happened, but now, on May 11th, you can go down and get your plants. I know I do, and they're very reasonable, and it helps the student horticulture program, so very, very good. Kind of on that same note, I hosted a group that I belong to, the American Association of University Women, today at the culinary arts program, was very, very impressed with, with the food, and was excellent, and somebody asked, do they grow their own vegetables? And I said, that would be a great partnership with horticulture and culinary, just planting the seed, that's just an observation, no, no fun at that. Thank you, I need trustee Zia to help me out. Okay, then also, I want to mention that there's two final days for the art gallery, which is featuring Larry White, who is not only an artist, but also a surfer, and so it's an ocean theme, so if you can get over there. And then at the end of the year, there are many banquets and concerts, music concerts, dance concerts, so I encourage the public to take advantage of that. I'm glad to hear about Spring Sing, a lot of years are left, but that's, that is an, and when I say old tradition, I mean old tradition from the 1950s. So that would be six, more than 60 years of tradition and a great opportunity. And then also, at the end of the year, we have the scholarship reception, which is June 6th, and I'm looking forward to that, and trustee Zia and I are doing scholarship interviews on May 18th, so I'm looking forward to that. And then finally, President Kellogg, and I didn't ask you ahead of time, so you can tell me, no, but you won't, I'd like to adjourn the meeting in memory of Maria Cochran. Maria Cochran is in the Long Beach City College Alumni Hall of Fame, she's on the foundation board, she worked for the foundation and was the chairman of raising the money She worked for the foundation and was the chairman of raising the money for the Long Beach College Promise Scholarship when it was first established. And she has been taken from us very tragically and too young, and I would like to adjourn the meeting in her memory.
Thank you. Trustee Malauulu.
I just have a couple of events to share with you that I attended this past month. During spring break on that Friday, April 6th, my family and I represented at Kamala Harris, Senator Kamala Harris, she was here in Long Beach. And again, I love seeing our LBCC students and faculty at community events. It just makes me really excited to know that we have people in our midst here at the college who attend school and who work here, who are involved in the community. So that was great to be able to see some students and to see some staff members also there. It was on a Friday afternoon, middle of the day. It was, it was great to see that. Friday, the 13th, I was on campus for the Beverly O'Neil Leadership Conference. We're going to need a bigger venue. It was crowded. It was jam-packed. The mentorship opportunity that was afforded to the participants is priceless. I've actually had two or three calls since then from people that I met that afternoon, seeking career advice and school advice and just advice. So, and that all started here. Last week, on Thursday, the 19th, I attended the Chamber of Commerce Awards in which President Kellogg presented one of the recipients. It was the Entrepreneur of the Year Award, and President Kellogg was one of the presenters. It was nice to be there. We had a nice representation of our small business community there, the Goldman Sachs. And then this past Saturday, one of the, one of my constituents, Ms. Robbie Butler, hosted her third annual Miss Single Mom Empowerment Forum. And I attended last year, and I was so moved by it that I brought the opportunity here to the campus. I sent out emails, and I saw maybe six or seven LBCC students who are single moms in attendance this past Saturday. It was all free. There were about 300 attendees, and they were given lots of resources and connected with lots of opportunities to help them, support them in their education ventures. I would also like to just say that in my, in my two years here, I've gotten more calls in the past three weeks than I have in two years, and it was all about the computers and the hacking. Just many students, faculty members asking, were we hacked? Were we hacked? What's the problem? What's going on? What happened? So, you know, I was thinking, we already talked about it. Should I include that in the report? But I think it's important to know that you do have board members who are very accessible and easy to reach. And I don't mind the calls. I might not respond to you till the middle of the night, or my voicemail might be full for a couple days. But, you know, we're all in this together, and I appreciate that. Also, as we close the year, I'd like to encourage everyone to finish strong. We just have a few weeks left. I know that, you know, we still have the May meeting, but by then, finals will probably already be underway. We've got reports and projects and research papers and graduation and transfers and award ceremonies. It's such a busy time of the year. Finish strong. Just for students, faculty, and staff, I know that we are weary, and, you know, we just can't wait for the semester to end. But finish strong. You got this. And then I would also like to, and we're going to talk about this more, I'm sure, and he doesn't want to hear it, but I'd just like to thank trustee Kellogg for his service as we prepare for a transition to welcome in the new board member. I would just like to let trustee Kellogg know that I am grateful for his service and his mentorship of me as a new trustee on the board. And I know that we'll be preparing something for him that he doesn't want. So sorry, Jeff. Thank you.
Trustee Otto.
So first, I wanted to recognize Officer Nick Harris in the back, who is our interim Jeff Lieberman for a while, who Jeff is now a commander. And so, welcome. Look forward to working with you and continuing the outstanding work that the Long Beach Police Department does here at Long Beach City College. I spent three days last week in New York City at the National Center for Collective Bargaining and Higher Education at a conference that they put on. I know the guy that runs it, and he had asked me to participate, and it was a very, very, very interesting experience and bring a lot of information back about how they do things in other parts of the country with regard to collective bargaining and higher education. And then really, finally, what I wanted to say is that we come to these meetings, and we all always think, well, yeah, this is a meeting for trustees, but, and we get all this work done. But if we're honest, and we talk about what's really going on here, this is the Jerome Thomas Show. And we do, we do all of this under the direction of Jerome. We're fortunate because we can't see him in the back rolling his eyes at the things that go on here. I can only...
There he is.
I can only imagine the conversations after these meetings with the other members of the staff about what they say about the board members and people in the audience. But we can call him out because just in the last week or so, he was named one of three outstanding colleagues here at Long Beach City College, along with Paul Creason, Dean Paul Creason, and Laura Rantala. And, but, but we know Jerome, and we know what Jerome does, and it's going to be harder for him to hide out now that he's gotten this award. And I spoke to him briefly. I spoke to him briefly before the meeting, and I said, this is fantastic. He said, you can call me sir. And I said, you bet. So anyway, that's all. Congratulations, Jerome.
Thank you. Next public comments on non-agenda, I'm sorry, no, we have our bargaining units. So anyone from the three bargaining units, reports from bargaining units, total of five minutes will be allowed to each bargaining unit. Let's just speak at this time. Hearing almost none. Thomas? I don't know if the big clock goes up or not, Thomas, but I have no idea.
Good evening, President Kellogg, President Romali, Board of Trustees, members of the audience and public. First of all, I'd like to say to President Kellogg, thank you for your over 15 years of service as far as like to the district. It's been well appreciated, and we know that you've given up a lot of hard work, a lot of times and hours and everything else as far as to be here, as far as for your dedication, as far as like to make us a better institution. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, but I'm around for a few more months, so I don't know why people even talk, you know, like I'm dead.
Okay. They say that if you don't remember your past, you have a tendency to repeat it. And in saying that, a reminder that around this time, six years ago, 178 classified employees, roughly one-third of the staff, was escorted over to T-1200, as far as to talk about the deficit and the pink slips that were going to be handed out and given to classified employees. Out of those, one-third of the workforce that went in there, everybody was hit and touched by it, and classified employees got chopped off by the knees. At that time, the district was at a deficit of 5.3 million. And with the three different things that I'm listening to and talking about, and it's been discussed tonight as far as with the retirement plan, also as far as with the funding formula that's running around and circulating, and in the consultation committee meeting last week in Sacramento, it was also brought up again. And I don't know if the may revise in the governor's office would have an effect on that. And then looking at the chart, that we were fifth from the bottom of that. And as far as liking the hit, that's possibly going from 6.1 to 10 mil. And I can't help but to cringe knowing that a third of the workforce got affected by 5.3 mil. And what would be the effect if this is six or greater than? Now, we appreciate the fact that in this retirement plan, that classified managers are also included in it, as far as it may be an incentive to slide out the door with the umbrella, golden handshake or whatever. And we all know that everything is subject to negotiations. On the heel of that, also, out here in the wings, is reclass study, which is 100% classified employees. Now, this started in 2016. This is 2018. Puppy's going to be, was a puppy, now it's going to be a full-grown dog before it turns around and gets ready to go hunt. So my concern is, all of these items are all budgeted, or it's going to come out of the budget. And after doing this for six years, it's been hammered home to me, I don't know how many different times, that there's only one pot of money. There's no slush fund on the side or whatever, and I don't know what's left in the reserve as far as to help us in the time that we need it. But my concern is, if there is a deficit, that the district does not repeat itself and bail itself out on the backs and the heels of the classified employees. And yes, we have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow as far as the district to talk about the retirement plan, and yeah, everything's negotiable. But the thing is, also on the heels of that, you have the reclass, and that's subject to negotiable as far as is there going to be money to fund and pay for the reclass, and whether or not it's going to have an effect as far as like on the classified employees. So that's just my thought on that as far as, you know, part of it's doom and gloom, because that's what we've been hearing and what have you. And I just want to make sure that the Board of Trustees realizes that the classified employees are not looking to be in that boat all by itself with the roles just turn around and doing all the pulling and pulling and pulling. And everybody else is sitting on the dock of the bay, just looking out and looking at us as we turn around and try to tread water or row this boat against the stream. Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas. Madam Secretary, I did not forget those other items. I'll come back and I'll touch on those other two that I ran by very quickly.
Good evening, Board. President, Superintendent President Reagan Romali, Board President Jeff Kellogg, administrators, faculty, staff, students, and community members. Janay Hunt, Faculty Association President. And I remember very unfondly, April 24th, 2012, with the, you know, the impact on our classified staff, it had a detrimental impact on all of us. And I, once again, want to commend Dr. Romali's leadership. And I am hopeful that you are being proactive with looking at the looming situation, financial situation, and considering the SERP offer to our employees at the college. And on that note, the Faculty Association will do our part to try to reach the minimum 10 faculty to honor that SERP motion this evening. And also, just on different note, the Faculty Association Rep Council invited Kevin Stinson, Officer Kevin Stinson, to our meeting last Friday to talk about emergency preparedness. And we were all pretty enlightened about how we're not ready for that to happen. Particularly, and I will be talking to Brendan Hayes about this, but a couple of points where we all feel pretty in the dark are, we don't know who our building coordinators are in the event of an emergency, and we don't know who our 25 CERT employees are. And more people want to be CERT certified. So that did come out. And then lastly, we are, of course, in our final six weeks of the semester, and I am encouraging all of our students to finish strong and all of our faculty to do what we can to help get our students across the finish line. Thank you.
Thank you. I did not forget 9.6 was trustee committees. We didn't have any reports to come out on that one. But then the item 10, which was trustee request for the Superintendent of Future Agenda items and/or reports. We do have some that are scheduled with the strategic plan. Was there anything else I needed to ask the question of the board? Is there any other items at this time? Let the record show there is none. Thank you. Public comment on non-agenda item. Madam Secretary, I have no cards, so I'm assuming there's no speakers. There's none. Thank you. There is no closed session required because we addressed it at the beginning. So with that, we're going to adjourn in the memory of Maria Cochran, which is really just a very, very sad in her passing. So we'll adjourn our meeting to our May 22nd, 2018 meeting. With that, there's no objection. The meeting is adjourned in the memory of Maria Cochran. Thank you all very much, and good night. Meeting is adjourned.